If we can stand and please say the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic, for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, so I see we have our regular members, Bill Rice, Holly Bem, Julie Eaton and myself, Don Colantonio, and Joe Campolito notified us that they would not be here, so we need to see two members. We will see Craig and Diane tonight. So Marcus, you are here as an alternate, all right?
Wonderful.
Great, thank you. All right. So Bill, you want to walk us through the minutes?
Sure. Okay, if the commissioners could refer to the minutes of the planning commission meeting dated October 11th, 2022. Do any commissioners have any comments on page one, which my copy is lines one through 46? Page two, or lines 47 through 92?
So the third bullet, line 55. So Glenn's not aiding us in the affordable housing plan. He was aiding us in the POC day. So I think, if I remember, I did mention that we did complete the affordable housing plan, so it should just end there.
Yeah, okay.
So a period instead of a comma after E30G. If we can take that out.
Let me change.
Okay.
Any other comments, page two?
I don't know if we want to put Glenn is going to be aiding in the wording down in the fourth bullet, because I think it-
Had to do with character.
What was that?
It had to do with character.
Right, so when we say the commissioner will be using the POC to structure their meetings, yeah, I don't know, I mean, if it matters, okay. So just, but take it out from, okay, perfect. Thank you.
Page three, lines 93 through 137. And page four, lines 138 through 181.
So in 141, I'm thinking, or 142, it doesn't say who made the motion. It just goes into who seconded it. I don't remember who made it.
We will go back and listen to it.
Okay.
If you allow us to make that change, we'll listen to it and make that change.
That'd be great, thank you.
Absolutely.
And then in line 149, it stated that with changing of leadership roles, decisions have to be postponed. I'm not sure what that means, but I don't believe I said that.
Was it related to George McGregor agent application? No?
No, I mean, I-
No idea what you meant when you said that?
I'm not-
It may have been, like why it took so long to do, you know, I think we were talking about the change in leadership, just referencing why it took so long to get us to the moratorium, the full year. I don't think it's relevant.
All right. Yeah, I just, I just wasn't sure what that meant, and I don't, I don't remember saying that.
Glenn and I were both at the planning conference that night, so it was totally in front of your meeting. You were talking about the cannabis moratorium, and perhaps you were asking about, you know, what was the, you know, had it taken us that long to get here for some reason, that there was an action for the, essentially, the year?
We did talk about that, but I wasn't, yeah.
Probably an okay bullet, frankly.
Okay. I just don't remember saying-
But I'm happy to listen to it again to make sure that's what you said.
Not a big deal, I mean, I would, I just, I don't know if people, I, it just seemed odd with it, yeah.
I think it was a comment you made, but it's kind of out of context.
Yeah, maybe that's, okay, so whatever.
I'd like to go back to line 141, where we had a comment about who had made the motion. I think if we go to line 121, the motion is, is captured there.
Oh.
Okay, so it's not just back to back.
Oh, okay, that, that makes sense then, she's, because, right, so it's saying what your motion was, and that then-
Yeah, that's what it is.
Julie, okay, all right.
Maybe, I mean, we could always, you know, parenthetical, or just get in the habit of saying Secretary Rice made a motion, seconded by, and then-
Okay, but that makes sense, then, then you don't, yep.
You know, just think of the, you know, how it progresses, motions made, and then it's generally seconded right away. And then there's discussion. It looks like the discussion is captured in between the motion and the second.
Would it be helpful then to do, made a motion, seconded by?
Yeah.
Yes, please, yeah.
That would be great.
Thanks, Amanda.
Okay, thank you.
Okay.
All right, so-
Any other comments? I'll make a motion to accept the minutes of the planning commission October 11th, 2022 meeting as amended.
I will second. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All those opposed?
Opposing?
No, abstaining.
I know, I saw that, yeah. Okay, any abstentions?
Yeah.
Two abstentions.
I wasn't here.
All right, so 4-0 with two abstentions, thank you.
Back to you, Madam Chairman.
Thank you. You do this so well. So first on our agenda is application 22-01, Dorset Crossing.
So this is my first public hearing with this group. I don't know what your normal procedure is, I think, for most public hearings. You probably had a habit of someone reading the ad into, into the, into the record. Staff is happy to do that unless you prefer to have one of your members read the record.
No, that'd be great.
We will notice that Simsberry, this was published on 10/13/2022, and it reads, "The Town Simsberry Planning Commission will hold a public hearing at a regular meeting on Tuesday, October 25th, 2022, at the Simsberry Town Office's 933 Hot Meadow Street, Simsberry, Simsbury, Connecticut, 0607, and the main meeting room at 7:00 PM on the following application. It's PC 2201 of Dorset Crossing LLC, identified as the owner and applicant, for a re-subdivision of Lot A and the property located at 30 Dorset Crossing Assessor's map 104, Block 403, Lot 013-A, Zone Plan Area Development."
All right.
So the applicant is here, staff is happy to give you a summary, or we can refer to the applicant and let them provide an explanation of their proposal.
I would love to hear from the applicant, that would be wonderful.
Good evening, my name is Dave Ziyex, I'm a professional engineer with FA Heskey Associates. We're located next door over in East Granby, and we've been working on Dorset Crossing for a long time.
Uh huh.
And this is my first meeting in this room since this all started, so it's been, you changed your desk or your podium here. It used to be up high and kind of rounded and curved, and now it's straight across, and I like it.
It was a while ago.
It's more friendly this way. Anyhow, back in 2012 and 2013, you and the zoning commission approved Dorset Crossing PAD, which is a 50-acre PAD, and it created, as part of that master plan, it actually created six lot subdivision that the various uses out there have been developed on. That was lots A through F. And way down in front, George, you told me you had some kind of maps for this?
I did, yes.
Yeah.
I'm happy to try and help here.
Basically, the parcel that is on the, the north corner of-
Let me share the whole-
Yeah, there's the whole master plan that you folks were working on and approved back in 12 and 13. There's the apartments in the center, there's the special MS housing located over there where George is pointing now. And down in front, where Lot A was created, only one building's been built so far, which is the 15,000 square foot office medical use down in the front there. The rest, the parcels or lots are, you know, available for development, and the developers, the owners, Dorset Crossing, have been actively trying to market those now for quite a few years. But what they like to do is, and it's purely for ownership and financial purposes, they like to split Lot A into two lots, so we would be creating a Lot H, just to, you know, to follow the alphabet. But Lot A would get a little smaller. Right now, it is 6.49 acres, and we would subdivide that so that Lot A is 1.85 acres, and the 15,000 square foot building would be entirely on Lot A. And then we would create this new Lot H, which is 4.64 acres, and then all the other approved development would be on that lot. There's really no changes to the master plan in either the scope of the project that's been approved so far, or any changes to the uses. This is purely to put the existing building on its own lot for financial purposes. And that's basically it. It's a re-subdivision technically, because this, you know, there is the six lot subdivision that's part of Dorset Crossing, but it's sort of shuffling around lot lines for the purposes of ownership. All the cross easements for parking, utilities, everything, that'll all remain. And at this point, we're still marketing the master plan as it's been approved, hoping to find some more tenants. And that's about it.
Is that a reference to Lot F?
Yeah, there's a Lot F on that corner there. That was going to be where Walgreens was going to be one day.
So that's an existing-
That's part of the original subdivision.
Yeah, that's part of the original subdivision, Lot F, it was A through F.
Okay.
Yeah. So that will remain, Lot F remains.
Nice job on that PowerPoint.
Any questions? Anybody have any questions?
Should we, could we ask about the financial reasons why this is-
The building's being sold.
Okay, and so to be sold, it has to have its own-
They would, the owners want their, want their building on their own lot, which is sort of the way all the development out here really is, they're all on their own lots.
And do we know what's going to go in there?
It's going to be re-tenanting for medical, accommodation, medical and office uses, again.
That's the existing building?
Yeah, the existing building.
Does it, does this change, modify the marketability of the remaining portion, Lot H, in terms of its desirability for development?
It probably does, yeah, because additional tenants coming forward, owners coming forward, they seem like they want to be on their own parcels, and not complicated, as far as buildings go, you know. Obviously, they all have to live with each other, with parking and utilities and things. But as far as where the, the building is physically located, it seems like from financing purposes, that if it's on its own land, that is beneficial.
So could it be argued that enhances the marketability and therefore developmental
That's worth, that's, that's the hope, definitely.
Yeah.
Get some new blood going here and get it rejuvenated again. As you know, there's an apartment complex going in way in the back, lots D and G, that's moving forward now. It's picking up speed. Yeah, I think it may have even actually filed for the building permit. So our focus is going to be on H and F moving forward now.
George, the town staff has reviewed this application as it pertains to the subdivision regulations?
We have.
And what was the outcome of that?
It meets the subdivision regulations, and it meets the, it also meets the regulations, zoning regulations of the master development plan for it.
Okay.
I would offer the staff report for the record, and I would just note that we, staff did recommend one additional, we call it non-additional condition, but an additional condition related to future construction and the submission of a unified parking and access plan. The reason we did that is, since this is a, this is a PAD, it essentially means, it essentially writes its own ordinance, right? Setbacks are different, so in this case, there, they have different sets of setbacks, side yard setbacks for buildings and the parking lot. And the parking lot is zero, so we would want to ensure that any additional development to the west, that we have a cross-access plan before any of that, and we don't have one yet, since there's only been one act, one, when building constructed, any future buildings, should really, we should have a, a cross-access easement and parking plan in place. So we would recommend that condition, in addition to the plaque reference.
You have a draft, you have a draft, motion?
We have a chair for the public hearing, so.
Yep. Oh, thank you. Is there any comment from the public? Thank you.
Again, I would recommend before getting a motion to close the public hearing, that you don't have any additional questions for staff, or any additional questions for the applicant.
Madam Chair, the applicant has no problem with the conditions recommended by staff.
Great, that was, I was going to actually ask.
Yes.
Perfect, thank you.
Thank you.
Are there any other questions before we close the public hearing?
Not for me.
All right, is there a motion to close the public hearing?
Aye, so move.
I second. All those in favor, we have to vote, right? All those in favor of closing the public hearing?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? All right, so the hearing is officially closed. So any discussion, commissioners?
George, you said there is a, okay, so item two in the draft motion is the, the condition?
It is, yes, sir.
Yeah, that's what this says, right, okay.
First condition is just substantial performance to the subdivision plan that was-
Okay, I'll make a motion to approve application number PC 22-01 of Dorset Crossing LLC, owner applicant, for a re-subdivision of Lot A, 6.49 acres with 15,000 square foot medical building into a smaller 1.85 acre lot, and creation of a new Lot H, 4.64 acres, on property located at 30 Dorset Crossing Assessor map I04, Block 403, Lot 013A, Zone PAD, upon a finding that the re-subdivision is consistent with the town's subdivision regulations and the approved master development plan for Dorset Crossing, subject to the following conditions of approval. One, the project shall be developed in substantial conformance to the concept re-subdivision plan for Dorset Crossing, progress print dated 9/27/22, prepared by FA Heseth and Associates Incorporated. Prior to the issuance of any building permit to construct buildings 1, 3, 4, 5, or 6 on lots AHF, the developer shall submit a unified parking and access plan in a form acceptable to the town.
Does anyone second?
I second that motion.
All right. Any further discussion? We can do that now, correct?
Yep.
No?
Makes sense to me.
All right, so all those in favor of the draft motion, please say aye.
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 Any opposed? Any abstentions? The motion passes unanimously 6-0.
Thank you.
So George, that'll require re-submission of plans that Aaron will have to sign, or any, any new drawings?
So we'll ask for my Lars for signature.
Yeah, okay.
Yeah. No, I don't think we've asked for any revisions to the, to the plan that was approved.
No, 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 I mean, I mean plans, I meant drawings.
Yeah, yes, yeah. My Lars.
Yeah, my Lars.
And letter the expert, my Lars, your signature, and we haven't done this in a while, so.
No, we haven't happened yet.
So the applicant will, will submit my Lars, or we'll ask Aaron to come in and sign, the applicant will report that in the town clerk's office, and we record, we keep one in the, in the plan.
Yep, good.
All right.
For posterity. So we're excited to have Glenn here tonight.
Yes.
Just jump right into your next, your next item here.
So what, it says new business, though, it does have, it-
You rolled right to it.
Oh, okay, that's, okay.
You rolled right to it, that's okay.
Okay.
Yeah. Yeah, Simsberry uses a different format for public hearings than I've been used to, where you have the public hearing, you essentially do each public hearing, and then you go on to the business of action.
Yep.
Not everywhere does that, some places do the public hearing, close the public hearing, take action, do the public hearing, so, so that's a, that's a, that's customary. If you had more items, you would do all the public hearings, and then you would go to new business and make those decisions.
Okay. All right, great. Welcome, Glenn.
So you can be here. Of course, I thought we were going to be here two weeks ago, but intervening, I guess, is probably the best way to put it.
Do you know that Glenn and I went to the regional planning conference in Rhode Island together, not together, actually, we walked past each other in San Juan, and we both got COVID.
Oh, boy.
At the, at the same conference, but had spent no time together.
What's funny about it is that, you know, for two and a half years, was able to avoid and, and all the precautions, let your guard down for a minute. So if you're not vaccinated, let me just say, you go, don't delay.
Now you have to wait to get boosted for three days.
Tough 10 days, we both, we both cut.
That was a surprise.
It wasn't good.
It wasn't good. But I'm excited to be here tonight to talk to you about the POC meeting. This is our kickoff meeting, and I think there's a couple of things here at the kickoff meeting we just kind of wanted to go through. I think first of all, is to kind of talk through the overall scope and schedule, so that we set our expectations now as to how the process is going to unfold. It's a little later start than we thought, so we're going to have some issues on the calendar in terms of a community meeting somewhere in November or the New Year's, and you do want to do that, if you want to push it on, we'll, we'll talk about all of that. But hopefully, you have in your hand something that looks like this.
Thank you.
And this is just, again, an overview of the scope and schedule of work, because if there are tweaks or changes or things that we want to clarify, this is a great time to talk about them, because it's easy to make changes at this point in the process. So the first page is laid out to sort of show you the various chapters of the plan, and they're grouped into three columns, sort of like the three bears. Some chapters of the plan really aren't going to require much work, we're going to update them for 2022 versus, or 2023, actually, versus 2017. And then there's a couple of chapters where moderate work effort is required, and then the chapters on the far right envelope are the ones that are going to involve the most effort. So I just wanted to kind of confirm with you this overall sense of direction. And if you have questions on any of these, the following pages are a little bit more detailed. So we say here, okay, look, in chapter nine, this is what's going to happen, it's a moderate work effort, et cetera. So let me just, again, the front page is the summary, but let me just start walking through the pages after that.
Glenn, the only thing I would say is that, that, you know, we, we shared with you from the beginning, you know, we kind of did it together, really, the, the original draft scope, and then the revised draft scope, and we may have revised it to at some times. So this is, this is hardly a departure from that, that scope, it is, it is that scope.
Yep. So on page two, not really much in the way of major changes, except for chapter four, which is community issues and concerns. This chapter is going to get updated, because we're planning on doing an online survey, we'll talk about the questions later this evening. And we're also going to be doing community meetings and stakeholder meetings, just to see what's bubbling out in the community in terms of those issues. So that would be the chapter that, among the first six here, which is going to get the most attention. Chapter five, natural resources, the natural resources in town haven't changed, they're still where they used to be, we haven't lost any yet. So we'll have strategies on that. And then I think on the open space section of the plan, with the preservation of the cul-de-sac land and some of the other changes that have happened, we're going to have a chance to update those maps and have all of that information for us as we move forward. If any questions along the way, just, just interrupt me, otherwise I'll keep rolling. On page three, chapter seven, was maintain and enhance community character. As you may recall from our prior conversation, word character has now got a funny place in Connecticut Land Use Law. I think it's probably okay for us to use the word character in a planning context to talk about the things that matter to us, and have mattered to us, back to the, you know, the older plan, that these are the things that make Sims very sticky for people, things they really like. So we may call them characteristics, we may call them something else entirely, we're not quite sure yet. But this chapter is really one of the first policy chapters, it's very important to people, and we want to go into some detail about the types of things that are important to us. So unwinding all of this, we're going to be doing an analysis of the PA 490 program, and we're going to all, put it all back together again. So it will still be a robust chapter in the plan, but updated, if you will, based on what we currently see and learn. We've got some moderate changes to the economic development section of the plan, to talk about the review process, the inclusion of fiscal impact analyses, strategies that have been implemented since 2017, and the survey results, et cetera. So that's going to be an area of focus. And then also, chapter 10, in terms of residential development, because the town has adopted its affordable housing plan, to integrate that, to make the two, play nice with each other in terms of those scenarios, and move in that direction. And because Simsberry is a community with a separate planning commission and a zoning commission, we've got to try to, you know, again, play nice with the zoning commission in terms of the strategies and the verbs we pick, et cetera. So that's something that, with this intention, is moving forward.
Glenn, can I, can I ask a question?
Of course.
And George and I talked a little about this, you know, we, we had that joint meeting with conservation, and in order to do some of the things we might want to do around zoning and things like that, I, I think it would make sense for us to meet with zoning?
I agree.
Okay.
We are a primary stakeholder, and I think a joint discussion with them on the relevant topics is important.
Yes.
Just as your, your conversation with the Wetlands Conservation Commission was, so we're going to encourage that.
I'll follow your lead on this. So I think that throughout the process, we wired in public and community meetings to get input from different groups, et cetera. We could meet with zoning, as we're, had a chance to talk through our draft changes to the plan, and how we want their feedback. If you feel it's important, we touch base with them early to tell them what we're doing. What's the thing, you know, tell them what you're going to do, and do it, and then tell them what you did. And so, again, I think as George points out, the relationship between the two boards is important. So this could be a situation that we do something like that to keep them involved.
I mean, it's a real entree and an opportunity, since we haven't had those meetings before, it's, it's a perfect time.
Yeah, that's, that's my feeling, is that if, we want this to be a document that's really working, I, I, like their buy-in or their input in order to, for us to be able to, if, if we're going to hold people's feet to the fire across the board, I would think-
It's, you know, it's important because there's so many of the action items, you know, are regulatory in nature, you know, change the zoning ordinance to allow this, or change it to this. So, you know, their buying's really important.
Right.
You know, what are they willing to take on over a two, three, five, 10, 10-year period? It's important.
On page four now of the material we put together, chapter 11 is about promoting sustainability and resiliency. I would say that this is one of the sections of the plan that has changed quite a bit in the last five years, a much greater focus, both with the organization, I'm sure you've heard of Sustainable CT, but also efforts at the state level with regard to this. So subtle changes to the wording here could actually put us in line for grants and other things like that that would help us move ahead. So I think it's, it's timely that we up our game a little bit on the sustainability and resilience elements of the plan.
We did have Rich Cortez, who was our liaison-
Remember, I'm doing that now.
Okay, okay, so you can help us with, oh, perfect.
Oh, I mean, this is perfect, yeah.
Good, good, awesome. That's why I remember you taking that question.
The prior plan was, they have sort of three major elements to it, conservation, development, and infrastructure. And the question in a sense is, does sustainability integrate through each of those, or is it in fact now an overarching thing that gets its own? We're going to have to get into the details on this, and I think I'm flexible in the organization of the plan as to how it should work. So I have, you know, I have a recommendation for you at this point in time, let's get into it, get into the details, and we'll figure out how to approach that, that next. Chapter 12, community facilities, still working on the strategies from 2017. Living in town, I kind of have knowledge of a lot of the stuff that's going on, so I'm not sure that we need major updates. I'm not sure that we need major updates to that section. But we will be meeting with department heads as part of our work and so we'll be asking them questions about that. And if there are things, we'll bring those along. You may recall as we were finishing up the last plan that they were embarking on the Lake and Ped Master Plan. And so it's kind of a deficit in our current plan and it's time to bring it into the fold. So we'll be recognizing that as well. And then I think, just kind of moving down the page a little bit in terms of the implementation section, I think this is an area where we're hoping to make some real progress as part of this plan. I've been doing quite a bit of work with communities over the last five years or so. In terms of implementation, the best way to set up a process that allows things to be promoted, encouraged, monitored, managed going forward. I think as we talked about with regard to the zoning commission, we can't really tell them what to do, right? Because they have independent authority. On the other hand, if we can work with them, coax, et cetera, and be good partners, we can accomplish great things. So I think to up our game on the implementation section of the plan, to allow it to become a much more effective management document rather than just a policy document. And I think there's new tools, Excel spreadsheets and tables and other things like that that provide the opportunity to, excuse me, manage that on a regular basis. So I think that's where we're intending on going. So that's the scope of work. I think as George indicated, we've talked about this a couple of times, so I just want to make sure that that works. And now the next thing really here for us is the schedule in terms of moving forward. We hear a thumbs up today in terms of the scope. We're going to get started on this stuff. Our current approach, what we're thinking about is to undertake stakeholder meetings, an online survey, community meeting. And then in January, we will summarize this input for you and say, okay, here is what we've heard. And I think that then sets the stage for where we go from here in terms of the next steps in the research, analysis, and investigation. The scope of work may change a little bit based on what we've learned and I'm okay with that because we're reflecting what the community is telling us. So I think we'll talk about the survey in a little bit. I think I need a little bit of time at the end of December or whatever to put the survey results together. So we'll talk about what we think our end date will be for that. How do you feel about this concept? And stakeholder meetings are me meeting with people during the week, during the day, so it's generally not a huge problem, if you will. But in terms of a community meeting, we're starting to get close now to Thanksgiving.
How do we push that to January? How's that affect?
I mean, I'm.
We have a bunch of community meetings in the next couple of weeks.
Yeah, before the holidays are ramping up.
And I think.
That looks, that probably would, would only allow us like a mid-December community meeting.
Yeah, I mean, you've got sort of a small window in there. And so I think there are things that we can be working on in terms of background information analysis, et cetera, and then bring the public meeting in January and our review of that after that and bring it back into the process. So if you're okay with that, why don't I modify this schedule to push the community meeting back? We can start to ramp up our PR for that in December, et cetera. But if our normal meeting night is, your normal meeting night is the second.
Second and fourth Tuesdays.
So what might you for the second Tuesday in January? Or I'll work with George in terms of your workload, et cetera. If it needs to be a special meeting night or something like that, we'll figure out a way to make it.
What do you think that format looks like?
Community meetings, it's interesting. I hope that we are able to have an in-person meeting with maybe a hybrid element to it. I think public meetings work much better when we're able to see each other and hear each other and listen and ponder ideas. And it seems that Zoom has been a godsend in a lot of different ways, but it doesn't allow for the same quality of dialogue. So I think my hope would be that we can get people to talk about ideas for the future of our community and listen to other people that may have an entirely different idea, but then accept it. So my number one hope would be that we get to do it in person and we get good attendance. If it's just not going to work that way, then I think we're going to have to go with a hybrid type of approach. But I also think the survey will have been an opportunity to collect a lot of information. I think even though it's the holiday season, you can do surveys on your phone these days. There's all sorts of things that can happen. So we could tease people by saying that, you know, January, the first, second Tuesday in January is going to be the unveiling of the survey results and see what we get and talk about that. So we're going to try to use whatever tools and techniques we can, attendance, because I think an in-person meeting is the best way to have dialogue. It can be hard. People have gotten a little lazy during Zoom and COVID, but that would be my first choice. And again, we'll, we'll monitor this situation as the best way to do it.
Glenn, I'd like to just suggest, by the way, in all my dealings, I thoroughly agree that in person you get the best input. However, what is very important to us is that we get as much input as possible. We want everyone to participate who can from Simsberry and we don't, we've got one shot at it. So I would like to request that we seriously consider hybrid to allow those people who are just not ready or just, who have just changed their habits because, but encourage, and I think people who are passionate, excuse me, will, will want to be here. But I, I really just, you know, this is our one shot and.
There are other shots in the process.
Well, that's right. There are other avenues for input, but.
We'll talk about that real quick though, just because I think the idea is the first go around the public input and participation in the survey is to get input from people in terms of how the process should go and the issues that need to be focused on and addressed. So it's a, what I call sort of a scoping set of meetings to make sure that we're not missing anything as we move forward. As we then go through preparing plan chapters, reviewing and discussing those, we're going to get to a draft and then we're going to go to the community and say, okay, here's what we're thinking for our plan. What do you guys think? Are we on, you know, cold, warm, getting warmer? What are your thoughts or feedback? And then make changes and refinements based on that and then head for the public hearing on adoption, which again falls at a slightly funny time of year because it's, I think it's September of, yeah, September of next year.
We crush that basically.
Yeah, we will. And if, you can't do it the summertime. So if we have to kick it over a month because we did a January thing or whatever, it's not the end of the year. We're not subject to a state timeframe on this update. We are doing it because we think it's important for Sims.
I think that, you know, one of the challenges on, on the public meeting side is, is I think just we have to work hard trying to, trying to get the message across that, that, you know, we're not throwing the 2017 plan out the window. We love the 2017 plan. This is an update, kind of a selective and categorical update, and these are the areas that we work on affordable housing, we're working on this, this language of character, working on the sustainability. And so I think that's really important as part of, as our approach and our message.
And I think there are all sorts of ways with social media now to get good penetration in the community in terms of how these issues come on the people's radar screens. I've had quite a bit of success in some communities in the past by using temporary lawn signs, which we get tired of right now in election season. But if you're driving around town and you say three signs that say public meeting, high school, wherever we're going to do it on such and such a day, you know, sometimes you see it once and forget about it. You read it in the paper, you forget about it. You didn't write it down. You're driving around town. So again, I think we'll try to monitor this and figure out how to make this work best in terms of getting meaningful input for you and for the plan. So with that, so early 2023, we are going to have a meeting to summarize community input and talk about if there's any tweaks or changes. In the meantime, I will have been doing research, investigation, and analysis on the different elements of the plan. And then right after that, the next month, we're going to be into starting to review plan chapters and changes. Because we're editing and updating the plan, my general approach is probably going to be to try to do a red line so that you're familiar with what the changes are and you can understand based on things we've talked about, why. And then maybe a new chapter like sustainability and resilience that we're, you know what? Get to a red line. Everything's a red line. So we'll move in that direction. But I anticipate, the way this schedule is laid out, that February, March, and April would in fact be discussion of plan chapters and then actually seeing the whole draft plan itself. And you can give me feedback as I like it, I need some additional work here or whatever. And then the hope would be to make revisions and discuss that and get to a public informational meeting on our draft plan. This is showing in the monthly check. Again, you're not into summer vacation. The first part of June's fine. After that, people start to get a little snarky that, you know, they might have been on vacation. But then to take that information over the course of the summertime, revise, revisit the plan, get it into a format we're comfortable with. State statutes require a 65-day wait period between the day that we called, you know, proposed plan and our public hearing. That's what Boris Lachman gets to at the end. And also we send it to CROG as well. So that's kind of built into the end of the summer and that's what put us into September. So how do the phases and the opportunities for public input and the general approach sound to you guys? Good?
Yeah, reasonable.
Yeah.
Perfect. So I think the next thing is that George and I have started to talk now about the survey and the approach to the survey. The other initially, the draft survey and the survey started off with a lot of questions about the 2017 plan and whether or not people felt those strategies were still relevant. George and I got to talking and thinking about other things that we'd like to know. And so they added some additional questions in, which is sort of either updating information that was in the 2017 POCD or just other information that might be useful to know. And that increased the number of questions in the survey and the response. So I think the first question that I'd like to ask you guys before we get into the nitty gritty of the actual survey questions themselves is, what would you hope to learn from this survey? Are we interested more in validating the strategies that were adopted in 2017 and whether people still agree with those or see where, you know, support or interest drops off? Or do we want to, in 2017, we did a telephone survey, you may remember that. And so to ask independent questions. What would you like to accomplish as part of the survey?
I think it's about how people feel and how they really feel differently about things today as they suppose where they were seven years ago, right? Five years ago. Like you said, were the, are the things that were priorities then still priorities today? What's new that wasn't, right?
I just wanted to add, I think one of the things that I would be very cautious about in the survey is, because as I went through it, I was asking this question, how much change would we actually make to the document? I would want to be careful about not asking questions or opening doors that we don't have the capacity to move on in a revision as opposed to a brand new or a whole, right, brand new document, right? My understanding of this was there were some points of revision that we were looking at, right? That's what we're doing. And so I wondered that we should be focused there instead of opening doors that we cannot actually walk through at this point.
What are the changes in the world in our, the whole work from home episode in terms of COVID? I mean, the changes in terms of internet retail and what that's meant to sort of occupancy of some of our business areas in town. Just the gentleman who was here this evening talked about the subdivision and the challenges they had. Residential's going gangbusters, but the business side of it has been a bit of a challenge. You know, tax base is important to Simsberry. I mean, we've, I'm old enough and looked here long enough to remember the fight. I was the town planner in Avon at the time. We were fighting over who was going to get Hartford Insurance Group. You guys beat us on that. So I'll get over it eventually.
Now they're gone.
Now, if I had told you that, well, hey, you guys, well, but guess what? In 20 or 30 years, it's not going to be here anymore. You never would have lived. And yet here we are. So there's times that we need to ask questions that aren't just reaffirming a five-year-old strategy. We really need to get that. And my pledge to you is that if things come up in this process that are important to the community, well, you know what? I live here too, so I'm not, I'm not going to try to nickel and dime you. I'm going to say, okay, look, we need to put some attention in on this issue. And I think we've got the capacity and the budget and everything else to be able to do stuff like that. Somebody comes along and says, we want to do a feasibility study for, you know, a nuclear power plant. Okay, all right, I'm going to draw the line. Other than that, I think that we can respond to those issues. I think the challenge in my mind right now is the length of the survey. And so the question in a sense, I think to send us, we try to do both approaches to the survey. Survey Monkey told me, the original survey that you made, remember from early October, Phil, it's George.
Yeah.
Yeah, go for it. Ready? Everybody keep a straight face. So the original survey, which we had sent out for our prior meeting early in October, was shorter. Survey Monkey estimated that that survey would take up to 10 minutes to complete and they estimated a 77% completion rate. Now, I've been doing surveys for a long time and that's powerful. That works for people in terms of, you know, enough time. People care about Simsberry. They live here, it's their hometown. They, they care about it. When we increased the number of questions, the survey time went to 18 minutes with a 68% completion rate. And that's when I started to get a little nervous because I think, we really could keep people in for 68% response rate, but asking people to hang in for 18 minutes. And some of the questions get a little dense.
Yeah.
Yeah.
So if you could tell me what you're hoping to accomplish or what, what you would like to get out of this, I think we can now sort of go through the survey questions and say, okay, well, let's, let's tank this question. I mean, so for this one, for example, you hear, it's on the screen, number 11, open space. We've set it up to summarize the key elements of the 2017 plan for open space and say to people, how do you feel about these strategies? Strongly support, somewhat support, do not support, or oppose? There's an opportunity in each section for them to give us a comment and tell us what their reaction is to that. And then an alternative is sort of question 12 that George brought up here on the screen, which is saying to people that it's an independent now, it doesn't ask about the 2017 POCD. It says, we should try to acquire more open space and parks. Probably agrees on what.
It's kind of alternative.
I'm sorry.
Well, in an alternative way, instead of doing like every single component, you can have people force rank, right? So if these are all the things that are here in Simsberry, how would you rank them? That could chop out a whole bunch of questions.
We added a quality of life question that does, does that.
But like when you talk about open space versus development versus conservation, so you, you have your audience force rank that. Then based on their ranking, you could triage those questions to them so it's meaningful to them and a little bit more curated.
So these questions that we have in there, for example, about the 2017 strategies, are a little dense in the sense that you have to read through the 2017 strategy, process it in your mind, and then decide whether or not you will agree with that. So what may make sense to do is to tank those questions to the same degree or extent, but triangulate on some of the other questions and maybe add questions in that would give us independent strategies related to certain things. So this is a new question that wasn't asked in 2017. This is one about traffic congestion. George and I were having a conversation, talking about areas we would want economic development, but these may also be areas that face traffic congestion issues. So how might we balance those? How might we approach those? And so the questions like this can help us kind of have those kinds of conversations.
Could I just make an observation? If, if your objective is to look at things that might not be as needed as other things, I would imagine we have some traffic information on our, on actual rush hour congestion and, you know, this would be subjective, but I, I think that would be information we could obtain from other sources than, and then including it in. I mean, again, if we're trying to have.
We certainly have that data. We certainly have that data. Maybe we ask these questions because it's important to get a sense of what the community thinks. I mean, it's often perception and sometimes that's more important than data, at least to decision makers.
I mean, do you find in congestion, people differ from what they experience? I mean, things that are congested are congested and things that aren't.
I'm trying to ask a question that the people, barometer of congestion is not really worn out by the data.
Oh, really?
It's just, I guess, when, when the community conversation happens like this, which is, you know, we ask the question about the affordable housing. Then we get an answer, we really need more affordable housing. All right, well, so. All right, well, so you add that to the table. And then we say, we really do need to attack more tax base and more employers, and we need to put them here. And now, all of a sudden, we've added affordable housing, and we've agreed we're going to add more, more employers in our quarters. Well, now, we can't ignore the issue that we've added more trips. And now, what does that mean? So I think trying to get a little better sense of, of what the community tolerance is, is important.
The only reason I mentioned it is, and I've had to do this in the commercial world, it's a real bugaboo, because if you say, well, what are the things we want to know? There's this massive list. And, you know, it takes two days to answer the...
Sure.
God knows, I've worked for companies that tried to do that to their, to their, their target audience. Honestly, you know, where it took hours. And as, as you pointed out, you know, 10 minutes is good, longer is, you're going to lose some. And, and I'm just throwing out, if there were some areas that we could get some information from in other ways. And also, I, I see things like on plan priorities, there's two questions asking very similar things. And we may be between 33 and 34. I think those differences are something that means a lot more to us in, in policy than it does to people who actually aren't even familiar with our, with our rules and regulations, but, or our P O C D, but just feel strongly about these areas and think, well, didn't I just answer that question?
Yeah, so it's funny, I've had a change...
And, and yet, I do know those are two different things we're looking at. I'm just making suggestions as things that might fall by the wayside. That's all.
You knew me tonight, thinking that I was going to advocate strongly for regurgitating the 2017 policies and asking people for support. But if I've listened to your input, I think actually, picking up the questions which are asking people sort of new information, some of them are from 2017, but the same questions are other questions. We don't ask them the strategy, like, did we do a good job and pat ourselves on the back? Well, we're asking people, what's important to them, and what do they care about? And then, we can figure out whether or not that means we need to be changing the strategy. So I think what we can do is put those into, I think, what we were talking about earlier, sort of a forced ranking, which is, okay, in the area of conservation, we have the following four topics, et cetera.
Those people hate forced rankings. I, I also know that.
But that's how you get preferences.
Oh, no, but yeah. I mean, it's, it's ideal until you're, you're the one sitting there in front of someone who is muttering, you're refusing to do it, or...
All right. So I think what I'd like to do is kind of move in that direction. I'd like to go through the questions, tell you which ones are going to get tossed, et cetera. And you, you might have some observations, say, that's a great question, that question was really terrible. There, there is a reason 32 and 33 are in there, so when we get there, I'll explain to you what we're trying to accomplish.
I have a really basic question, and that is, actually, two or three parts. First of all, how are people invited to take the survey? Second of all, do we care whether or not they're residents? And what do we, third, what do we expect in terms of them? What would, what would be a good completion rate? We talked about 68% earlier, after over 18 minutes.
That's what Survey Monkey does. I mean, so that, to me, that's not as useful a number.
Okay.
So I would expect us to get north of 500, possibly to 1,000 participants. I think that would be our goal. And it can happen, so that's what we're going to shoot for. We use all sorts of means and methods to get the word out. In some of the recent survey work I've done over the last couple of years, the first question is, how did you hear about the survey? So what do you think the number one answer is?
Friends or social media?
Social media. Which is so funny. I mean, to me, it's like, social media is, I don't know, it's not, you know... But that's where we have to go. We have to go there because people care. So the towns feed, if you will, in terms of Twitter or Facebook, and then people in town who are influencers, get the word out, get it to go viral, tease everybody every now and then with, you know, new information. The town's website, it's amazing, actually, how many people indicate that they saw on the town's website. So they're going there for Parks and Rec or something else, but...
We have great, you know, we've got great local partners as well. Chamber of Commerce has a, has a huge mailing list, and Main Street has a huge mailing list, and, you know...
Those are local boards and commissions. So to go out to each of you as individuals and members of every other board in town, because you guys are sometimes the closest.
Right. Karen Morgan and folks like that are more than willing to help us.
Do we care if the respondents are actual residents or not?
We can parse by that. Well, I did some work in the last couple of years with affordable housing plans for municipalities, and there were people who participated in the surveys who were not residents. And the opportunity in the survey was, well, if you're not a resident, why are you participating? And people had some really great responses. First of all, I've always wanted to live in your town, or live in Simsbury or whatever, and these are the things that are important to me. So that's like prospective marketing type of thing. I used to live in Simsbury. I, I care about it still deeply. It's a special place for me, and so I can still give you useful input. So my sense is, go ahead and ask the question, just have people disclose, and if we want, we can cross-tab the results. Say, residents felt this, non-residents felt that. And if we really want to take them out of the mix, we can.
But my experience has been, in doing a couple of, doing this at least three times, is that very rarely do you get a response from somebody who is completely unacquainted with the community. Even if they don't live here, it's an employee, it's a business owner. So, so that feedback, I've always thought is really quite valid.
Just as a quick technical though, we also keep track of IP, the IP addresses that come back, so if somebody's trying to stuff the ballot box...
Yeah.
Why are they going to stuff the ballot box in the P O C D? But we're able to catch on as to what's, what's, what's happening, and if somebody's really trying to, you know, enable the results, it's never been a problem.
Do we care or ask whether they're property owners or not?
Yeah, I think that's one of the...
It is. It's a space of something, or renter.
A renter, right, right.
And again, our purpose here is to understand sort of a perspective that people may bring from the survey. And really, for a P O C D, we're not going to make public policy on whether you're an owner or a renter. I mean, that's, we care about making a good, strong community. But we're going to have this data, and we're going to have it for years. And if somebody wants to get into the data and who doesn't like Parks and Rec or something, I don't know, turns out, that might be a surprise. So the data will be there for people to get into.
I'll ask a question.
Yeah, you can ask too.
I'm just curious for people who are elderly and don't have computers, is there going to be any type of means of a sort of focus group for any way to get them the ability to fill out the survey?
Yeah, so it can happen a couple of different ways. So one of which is this is stakeholder group. I can go to the senior center and make a book of the town, just go over there and work with them, but the time that works for them. I think we can give them paper surveys, they can fill them out. It still needs to get put into Survey Monkey, but, you know, somebody can sit down and just...
Stanford.
It's quick. So there's all sorts of ways that that can be handled. I think the library too, is that there's computers right there, and that's an IP address that, yeah, okay. Somebody may use a library computer to fill out. It's not a problem, even though they all come back with the same thing.
I know books to your door as well, when you deliver books, because they're, people tend not to be able to leave their homes, and they also tend not to have computers that you could put in their delivery bags and pick up.
So who does that? Is that the library, or is that social services?
I've signed up before to deliver through the library, and also, I think the junior women's club was, had a role in it for a while. But I believe through the library, if you spoke with Lisa, she could give it to you.
Give it to Lisa in Christian.
Yeah, this is my name, Kristen.
We'll figure that out.
I could even ask a couple of questions, see who's handed to you too. The lead person on that at the moment.
So that was part of my question about the representativeness of the last sample. And do you use some of that data to say, how do we adjust how we're seeking participants this time? I don't know how representative the...
We always want to try to seek out more younger people. There's always one of the biggest challenges. Younger people. Mostly younger people. We never get...
I'm a huge fan of telephone surveys, and I probably pushed the town to do that five years ago. And the reason is, is that with the access they have these days to landlines and cellphones, they can reach out affirmatively to people. And we worked out a protocol that even if you didn't recognize on the phone, you didn't answer, they would leave a message and tell you why they're calling and saying they're going to continue. They'll call, they called the number three times. And if you still decided not to participate, I usually would say something like Simsbury Survey, or something, you know, like that. But it's getting harder and harder to get people to pick up and landlines and everything else. So basically, pretty much, even the survey firm I worked with last time says, they don't really do telephone surveys anymore. Everything's going to focus groups and the online. So I think our goal is to figure out these little niches in the population. I hadn't thought about people who are homebound, but, and may not be computer savvy. So the issue is, yeah, I mean, let's see what we get.
That's why I wonder if we can use our past data to see who did we miss, right? Who are we not, who are we not finding? What demographics are we missing? Do we want to do something special?
The last time we did that, it was a long survey. Excuse me. Telephone survey, not online. But that's an interesting question. Let me see what I can find out. So I think what I'd like to do, if you guys are up for it, is to go through the questions one by one. I don't think we have to get into the details of each one, but I'll just tell you, I think this is a keeper, or this is a tosser, and you guys, give me your feedback as well. So I think the introduction is just to get started. The first couple of questions are just puffballs, to get people used to clicking on the stuff, and they're not necessarily major. But how did you learn about the survey? I think that's a keeper. What's your connection to Simsbury? This is the owner, renter, private school, seasonal, operated business, et cetera. How long have you lived or operated a business here? And how would you best describe where you live or operate a business in Simsbury? Those are fairly easy questions. For people who are visual, create a map, if you will. We're not going to have hard street addresses for Simsbury Center, but I think people will generally, how do they affiliate in town? Question five, what type of housing do you currently live in? How important were the following factors in your decision to live in Simsbury? So I haven't tossed anything yet. How would you rate the overall quality of life? See yourself living here in 10 years, and what, how do you see yourself living here in 10 years from now? I think those are all okay. Fairly quick, move through, develop a sense of what is it, or was it about Simsbury that attracted people to town, and made it kind of sticky.
I have a question here, running back to seven. Is there a way, like, how do we get a, get a deeper answer to something like that? Like, if someone says, how would you rate your quality of life? If someone does anything, let's say, that's fair or poor, is there a way to get additional information on that? Because that may give us a lot more information than...
Yeah, if it weren't me doing that, I'd go back to the initial questions about, are you a renter? What is your demographic in the back? Just to try to see if you can pinpoint a population. I don't know if Glenn would do something differently.
Yeah, let me think about that one, because I think the other issue is that oftentimes, I mean, we make a joke sometimes, we say, hi, I'm from the government, I'm here to help you. And people, like, the first thing is, well, reduce my taxes. So we're asking for questions which are deeper than, you know, reduce my taxes. Everybody wishes their taxes were less. So I think it's hard to do. So if you said, well, why is it fair or poor? I could pretty much tell you what I think the responses are likely to be. And then if I could discard those, I'd like to see what's in the second tier. Open-ended questions are the hardest to categorize. If we get 500 to 1,000 responses, somebody has to read those through and categorize those and understand what those mean. So I try to be really careful on the open-endeds, because they are such a pain in the...
But they, sometimes they have great value, though.
They can, which is why, you know, I wouldn't throw one, and it's not a criticism, Joe, I wouldn't throw them on a question like this. I think the issues are asked from the top of mind, and I think generally what I find in these survey responses, 90 to 100% of the people are either excellent or very good.
Yeah, I'm not sure that, you know, if we, if we were looking to trim down the list, I would vote to deep six this one.
Yeah.
I agree, yeah. Seven.
I'm not sure what the preference is.
Yeah, it's number seven.
I hadn't thought about six.
Yeah, I was, my question is, what are we going to do with the information on six?
To me, to what are the amenities that actually brought people here?
So here's what, so just personally speaking, say, I came here just because my spouse lived here. That's not what keeps me here. I think it's a short-sighted question, because it gets you as to what brought people here, not what keeps them here, and what they're interested in staying here for.
So nurse is a big part of why people stay. So six is a possible, you don't have a strong feeling about?
Six or seven.
Six and seven, okay.
That's my personal opinion, I don't know what people feel.
I, I'm hearing Julie say that, that there may be value to six if we ask it maybe a little bit differently.
Yeah.
More information.
It's like, yeah, what are you most proud of by living in Simsbury? Or something like that.
Public meeting, that's an exercise that we run.
Oh, it is, yeah?
And there's two maps of town, one of them, what are you really proud of in Simsbury? And you put green dots on there, and you tell us what that is.
Yeah, that's awesome.
And then the other side is, what are you sorry about in Simsbury? That's fine. My wife would put Wagler Ford.
So this, the question is, you know, past tense, you know, how important were the following factors?
Right.
Shouldn't it be more like, what are, what are the factors that keep you living here?
Yeah, there's something a little bit more proactive in how we could, how we could phrase it.
All right, let's see where we end up. I think the big picture issue I wanted to kind of get to was 10 and 11. I would suggest we think those questions and questions like those. That is a very small box that says, here's our strategy from five years ago, do you still love us? And I think that I'd rather kind of get to some of these other questions in terms of people's thoughts or feelings on these particular topics, rather than force them into our box of what we said five years ago.
I think these questions may be valuable, really valuable, for this group after we get the rest of kind of the survey responses. When we start talking about changes to strategy, we go back through these and say, well, hold it. I think it's their job to kind of validate that.
But we've got 18 minutes in the survey. We're going to have to take some.
No, I, I'm with you on this.
Okay.
I would rather them just deal with this question, maybe not me.
Gotcha.
That's what I'm saying.
Yeah.
We're saying, all right.
So were you thinking of doing away with 10?
Really, that whole series of questions that I asked similarly.
When I read through this, I thought, well, this wasn't our main focus with redoing the P O C D, so I'm with you. I'm not sure that this, if we're looking to shorten, this isn't, wouldn't be my focus either. So you're talking about 10?
10, 11, and all. Those are some good questions to look like.
Right.
So I think what we may get to is that once we get a chance to get Survey Monkey back into a range of reasonable time, this is going to help us significantly.
Okay.
Then I think we may go get into a forced rank situation where we say, okay, the conservation section of the plan had these four topics in it, thinking for, towards a future Simsbury, how would you rank these?
Yeah.
What are important to you? Boom, now we got it.
Now we got it.
I mean, years ago, five years ago, it was character. Character was, and then open space, which is part of it. So it's all, you know, it gave us useful information.
So would you do away with 12 too then, or...
12 would stay.
Okay.
Okay. And 13? That seems to me that, I thought, I heard you say, get rid of 13, but it seems to me that this is kind of important to what we wanted to deal with. that this is kind of important to what we wanted to deal with.
Mm-hmm.
13, community character.
Yeah. Well, I think what I might then do is break it out into some parts that get to the issues, rather than group it all together with sort of some disparate plots.
I do, but I think it's hard to ask a survey respondent to just, to read the strategies. It just bogs them down.
Yeah. Well, they could feel differently about strategy one versus strategy three.
Yeah, and then what, right?
You know, I mean, that's really the issue of one set of responses, really, basically four questions, right? Four strategies.
So I think my sense right now is on 14, 15, and 16, to get away from three open-endeds here.
Yeah.
And figure out one open-ended that captures what it is that we want to know. And I think we can use that, save time and space, to get into more detail on 13. I think now 17 and 18.
There's so much to read.
There is, that's a... And the thing I found also about 17, reading it five years later, was the wording was very similar. So you sort of got lost, if you will, in the stuff. I mean, I think there are, as we know, fundamental differences between Simsbury Center, Terrifield, Wheaton, Westernbury, et cetera. But, you know, you're asking people a compound question. A lot of different pieces to it, and I think we can do better. So I think 19 can stay, 21 can stay. 22, I think, is okay.
What about 20?
20's a tosser, I think.
Okay.
I think the issue here, getting these types of questions is...
We ask a couple of additional housing-related questions to get... To get to that, that subject.
I agree.
And that's a very important part of the survey. And it's updated, just the housing needs question.
So 21 and 22 we need to keep?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Yep.
Okay.
23, I think, is good. It's got symmetry between what that says and this, so we're gonna get useful information on both of those. I think 24 through 27, I hope nobody loves those, because I think all of those got... 28, 29 go, 31 goes. How do we feel about 30? That was a traffic congestion question.
Well, if we're gonna remove all these others, then maybe, I feel a lot better about it now that we're gonna save the scope.
But think about this, Glenn, if you don't mind, because I think if you remove 28, I don't think we ask a question about community facilities.
Yeah, I like the idea of having like the broad categories, and then subsections, and then people ranking within it. Like, I feel like we're scrapping a lot.
Mm-hmm.
But community facilities wasn't one that, this wasn't gonna be a focus of.
No.
It really wasn't.
It's about the community and what they need.
But it's, it, right, but it was, we had specific areas that we wanted to update. Community facilities wasn't one that we talked about. So if we're trying to get down the survey and really get at what we're trying to do, because then it's gonna be an overall, you know, we weren't gonna take on the whole P S D, we were gonna take on certain subsects, and community facilities is one that we never even talked about.
I think 2017, the town had done a pretty good job programming out the community facility needs in town, so we looked at the different community facilities and felt that everything was being addressed, right? It was on our radar screen, and we were approaching this in a cogent, coherent way.
We asked that a little bit in 33, about Planned Parenthood needs and...
Yeah, yeah.
Community facilities, so there are some things included in that.
Yeah, so maybe...
Same thing in 34 as well, frankly.
So let's talk about that for a second. Maybe what we do here is rely on, I think it's 32 and 33, yeah, 33 and 34, excuse me. These questions look kind of massive. What I've had an opportunity to do in some other towns is the responses, the different rows here, are the same in each question. The first question is, is how important do you feel this topic is to Simsbury? And it's crazy, some of the things that have come up. I mean, in some rural communities, people are really bent out of shape about the lack of internet capacity, bandwidth, and cell phone service. The town really didn't have it on their radar screen, and it was an eye-opener for them, because people work in a phone network. And so they hadn't thought about it. And really, in a rural area, that becomes a big deal. The second question is, how do you think the town has been doing on this particular topic? And now what you're able to do is create a chart, which is importance versus performance. And what you get are sort of four quadrants, and says, these are really important to people, and we're doing a good job on. So maybe we don't have to get too wound up about that. But the things that are important to people that we're not doing a good job on, maybe those are the areas that we should really kind of be focusing on. So the questions look a little intimidating, but actually what comes out as an importance-performance chart is kind of interesting as to the messages kind of sending us for both the P O C D, but it could be the Board of Selectmen and others, to say, you know, that was a sleeper issue. We didn't kind of know that was out there. And, yeah, or things that we've been focusing on, people think, yeah, you know, it's not that important to us. It all wound up about something that's not as important. So they're big questions, but I find the information that comes back useful. So if you might also, then you might go ahead. If not, we can save ourselves some significant real estate.
I think these are the first two questions.
Yeah, I do too.
Asking. Like, I think that's, sets the stage.
So I prefer, if it's okay with you, to warm up to them by getting people to think about a lot of the different issues, and now you have to kind of summarize it all. If you hit people right off the bat with these, then you might as well not be asking the other questions, because you're gonna, you know what I'm saying? People will sort of almost talk her out on these two. So that's my thought. Do you...
I disagree.
You disagree?
I go through my phone, I'm gonna tell you what's most important to me, how we're doing, and then that's what I want most, and then I'll go into the other questions. Because if I answer the other questions, you should be able to figure this out. Like, that's my point of view. As a, you know, phone responder.
No, I think...
Although, I'd have to say that I spent a couple of years of my life running around to many countries administering these things in front of people to see how they respond. And I'd have to say, he has some validity on getting them warmed up a little bit, because then they think, oh, well, now I thought of something. It's sometimes nice to get people's...
Yeah, you have some different topics, and people don't really understand what it takes to run government, right? Or the various aspects that the town's involved in. So if you actually start to share with the width and breadth of all the issues that we deal with, then now you can say to them, okay, and how would you prioritize this? It might be useful. So let me, I think we're gonna do some movement around here on stuff. I still think I'd probably be inclined to recommend to you that we put these towards the back, so. I'll send you, Julie, a special survey.
For the younger folks, that's what I'm thinking about.
Well, once all these other questions are cut out, it might look really different too. You know, so I'm curious to see what it looks like.
See how it looks.
At that point. But I do want to raise in this, and this is the question I was trying to get at a little bit at the beginning. When I look at question 34 in the options, so for example, when it asks about increasing senior services and programs.
Yeah.
And I think about that, and I think, is that information for this commission? I mean, it sounds like part of what you were suggesting is, these are things that go back to the whole town and the Board of Selectmen and everything, and I, that's part of my issue. If we're narrowing, I think about what's the balance between, you know, this particular sheet that says, here are the minor changes, moderate changes, and major changes, and how is that reflected in the questions that we're asking? That's the kind of piece I'm trying to put together. Because I agree with you, 18 minutes on a survey today?
Yeah, we're down to 12, I think.
Right? Even 12.
I'm looking for 10 minutes or less.
Absolutely. I've been reading the latest polling, they're trying to get it three to six minutes.
Yeah, it was like five minutes.
Most they're doing. That's what they're doing now.
What, I think there's a little, is towns are getting... Get a little bit of a free pass, because people participate here, they go to the library, the streets get piled. There's so many different ways we interact with people, that they care about the fact they have a chance to participate. So people hang in there longer with us, and it's just, I don't want to abuse their trust, but I think we can take advantage of that a little bit. So I think we're gonna try to make it as efficient, I think, if we can going forward.
I do think questions about community facilities and the services we provide are valid in a survey like this. Whether we, whether this body creates additional policies to address them, I mean, that'll be up to you guys.
I think we're gonna learn, too, through the stakeholder interviews, the different department heads. We're gonna be asking them, how did the 2017 P S D affect you? If you had a do-over, what would you do or say? And we're gonna have these types of conversations.
And the other part is, we don't get to ask, we don't ask citizens questions all that often. So I think, you know, some of that data, just to get a little sense of the community, the pulse of the community is, is good for everybody. Good for the Board of Selectmen, but for all employee boards.
Wouldn't we do that in our community meetings? I'm just trying to think, if we're trying to pare this down to under 10, because I agree, but if we're gonna do that exercise in our community forums, that would be a place to ask about facilities and the like. Right?
So the other thing we do is...
I'm just trying to think of, how do we cut down on this to get it under 10 minutes, when we could have a focus and get really specific information at a community forum?
So here's what I'm gonna suggest for our next step. I'm looking to go work on this to pare it down. I am going to, through George, send you a link to a test online. You're actually gonna do it on your phone or on your computer, because I want you to feel how it feels, right? Because looking at it with this paper one way, but seeing it on the screen, and it's like, oh, is this thing ever gonna end? I mean, that's feedback, which is, I think, sort of useful for us. But we're gonna get your feedback, and then our goal, I think, is gonna be to get into the field sometime next week. Right? So we're gonna, it's not a normal planning and mission meeting schedule thing, but I'm gonna ask you for your, maybe get 48 hours, 24 to 48 hours, take the survey, give us your thoughts. I'm not looking for a thesis, I'm just looking for your feedback. We'll continue to refine the survey, and then issue the press release and social media and other stuff, and start the ball rolling. So we should have a little bit more time, because if we're going to the public meeting in January, then maybe we do actually, George and I were talking about an end date, and maybe it's New Year's Eve? I don't want you to hung over on New Year's Day.
I know, it's New Year's, I mean.
But I think that's gonna be our, I wouldn't, I don't think we've had enough dialogue that you would feel comfortable giving a green light here. So we're gonna make some substantive changes, give you a chance to look at it, and then email comments back.
So I don't, so just, let me just plead with you on this one. So we don't have a public meeting by emailing back and forth, reply only, send comments to me directly, do not copy everyone.
Yes.
Please.
Thank you.
Please. Otherwise, it's all foible, and it's all... Not that there's any... Right, it's not having a meeting on.
Yeah.
Send your comments to me without replying on.
Okay, so I think that the last questions here, again, are sort of the basic demographics, age group, and gender, et cetera. We're not asking questions about income and other stuff. I mean, some surveys do, but we're dealing with municipal issues, really sort of about our community, rather than, you know, people who make more money want this, or I'm not gonna go there at this point. So I think that covers...
So did we, did we take the open-ended ones out?
Yeah.
Yeah, so most of the open-ended, but I made a note to myself, George, to look at ways in each of the sections, conservation, and infrastructure, get an open-ended in there.
Because I think there's value in...
I agree.
...20 people kind of, right? A half a sentence.
So here's our deal, you and I are gonna flip coins for who gets the 10.
I'll do it. Yeah, I'll do it. That's what I do. I have a 20,000 employee base, and I had to read all the comments and summarize them. See, I'm like, it's not...
The challenge ends up being, well, I think...
10,000 people. I mean...
Put a word limit on it.
Well, I love you guys. Now we're gonna have a fully open-ended question. So all we'll do here is, so we'll export the results to Excel, you can put keywords in, Excel has autocomplete in the cell, and so it actually can go fairly quick. You read and say, oh, that's about taxes, T A X, autocomplete, you're good, and then just keep going on, and resort and read it through one more time. And so I think it could be efficient. Why don't we get the survey going here? Let's take off, we're not trying to get in the field, we could, it's possible we can get in the field next week or the week after, but we're gonna be rolling the survey for about six, I think we originally asked, it was nine weeks, through to the end of December, maybe seven or eight weeks, which is a very generous time period, even given the holidays. So I think, I know people are busy, but I think we're gonna be able to participate in that period, and then close it around the end of the year, and then roll, unroll the results, if you will. You guys perhaps get a sneak preview of the public meeting.
I do.
Do we need to do the public meeting early in January, or does it not matter for you to kind of keep on schedule?
We're rolling into January with that, so I'd like to do it, like, earlier, like your first meeting in January.
Which would be like the ninth.
Yeah, but I think, George and I will coordinate on this, because...
We'll figure that out.
Okay.
If you have applicants who need approvals and timeframes are running out of time, if we were going to agree on one of your meetings per month, I think our schedule is a little loosey-goosey through the end of the year, but come January, I think I'm gonna need a dedicated night per month for the next four or five months, just to work through chapters and stuff like that.
We had agreed the first, yep, the first Tuesday, which is the second Tuesday, but our first meeting of the month, because we were anticipating, you know, during holidays, and I didn't want that to disrupt if you came in on the second meeting with the holidays, so...
Understood, thank you.
Yeah.
So, and...
So I think we're, we said that would start now, so I mean, we, as far as I'm concerned, you could have...
Now that I think I have thumbs up from people, I need to work with George and with you to get the survey wrapped and ready to roll out, the PR and everything else, I'm gonna start doing the stakeholder interviews, meeting with department heads, and the other types of scenarios there. So I'll be doing work in the background, and then we're gonna have our public meeting after, and we'll start the PR for that. So my initial work effort is on the scoping side, so I don't have a lot to share with you until I've had a chance to get it all together, compile it, and then report back.
Do you, when you meet with the stakeholders, do you, do you want to do that alone? Do you always do that alone, or do you...
I generally do it alone.
Okay.
And I say to people, you know, what happens in Vegas stays in Vegas.
Okay.
And people have been very straightforward with me. If there are issues that relate to systemic issues, sort of within the overall fabric of the community, those don't always make it into the plan, but sometimes they do.
Okay.
So I promise people, you know, and that if I bring up a point, I'll never tell you where I heard it or got it.
Do you think you'll, when would be the next time you'd wanna meet with this group? So I just note for the record that you guys meet on election day.
I know.
So I don't know if that's a standard thing you normally do.
I think it depends on when.
But we don't currently don't have any...
Sometimes it's the first Tuesday, it just so happens.
Yeah, just, I'm just saying that.
And results won't be in until after eight anyway.
Right. I mean, we're not missing anything.
Eight is the 22nd.
Are the two meetings...
Sorry?
Yeah, I know, just gonna have...
Maybe people are working the polls.
December.
So we have to be...
Now, we'll have a chance to, I may only be here for 10 or 15 minutes. It's your first meeting in December.
13.
13.
Right, so we...
I think the idea would be to...
We see what...
We're not gonna see them in November, I don't think there's a reason.
I think it, unfortunately, because of the thing that's name will not be mentioned, slows us up two weeks. So now I'm gonna start hitting the ground running, et cetera, but I don't think I'll have anything to report to you in two weeks, which is fundamentally different. Let's translate that into, I get the online survey roughed out. I'm not asking, you don't have to go through and think about it in detail on each one, right? Because this is just a task, to make sure that you think the questions are good, the sequences, everything is, you are comfortable deploying this in the community. These results will not be aggregated in any way, shape, or form. And then you'll know the official release date, and then I'm going to ask you to go through and be honest, and put your thoughts and feelings.
Okay. So the only thing about the survey, we don't think we answered your first question, Glenn, which was, what do we want to learn from the survey? Like, that, to me, is the linchpin on why we're doing the survey.
Yeah. And I tried to use that question to get to the two types of questions that were in the survey, the groupings, which is the long length.
Thirty-three and thirty-four.
No, even before that, the dense questions about.
Yeah, I don't think we were looking for an overall validation of the entire P O C D.
Yeah. I would agree.
Probably trends that have changed since twenty fifteen, or twenty seventeen, or twenty fifteen when we started.
Yeah, when we started.
And now, you know, things that are out of step.
Yeah, I think that's exactly.
Yes.
Have, you know, what, what different issues have, have we had a change of heart?
Right.
Had more development here, we've had less development there, you know, and so have peoples, and we've had new people in the community, too. So, so have, have any of those sensibilities changed drastically enough?
Yeah. I think, things come up through this process that elevate a chapter from sort of minor change to modest change. I'm not too, too concerned about it. I saw embedded in the twenty seventeen plan, in terms of its strategies, I think we can tweak it as need be. We're going to be here having meetings anyway, so we're just going to bring another topic in. If things start to get.
That makes me a little nervous, because I'm managing the budget, so.
Well, I'm saying, I'm not going to affect you, unless you want it to, I wish I could do that. So thank you for your feedback tonight. I don't think I have anything else for you. My job now is going to be to refine the survey instrument. You'll get at least one test, maybe two, depending on the nature of that feedback. And then we'll just, George and I will let you know on the release date, the P R, et cetera, and we're off to run. Thank you.
And Glenn, part of this, I know this won't be part of the survey, but we talked about the implementation, or what are we calling it, George? Not implementation, but our, we're going to do it quarterly, or whatever, or monthly. We're going to go in and hold our feet to the fire, so to speak, on some of the things that we're.
I mean, you as a, as a body, you want to, you want to set up, you know, a regular process, where you're, you're looking at the status.
Status.
Of our implementation measures, which is something you don't do.
Yeah.
Which is something you need to.
So the key there is to have those entities that are assigned the action items to agree to do them.
Well, I think.
I'm not sure we got that last time.
No, no, but partly, frankly, partly it's reminding them that these were the items that they were, that they were kind of assigned or charged with, and they may have done some, and they may, but, but I just want you guys to have a, have that kind of a regular, whether we do it quarterly, twice monthly, whatever, I just want it on your agenda, so. And it'll, scaffolding, they have a heavy lift on it by contacting those, those folks who were assigned, you know, prioritization, and kind of see where we are. We should be providing you.
So that'll be.
Updates and updates.
Yeah, the, I mean, I think that, my sense is, we need to go through the strategies and recommendations first, to identify what those are. And then my goal is to work with you, and anybody else who thinks should be involved, to prioritize those, is what do we think are like the number one things here?
Yeah, we should.
Top tens, or whatever else. But give you a document, which is a usable document over time, like an Excel spreadsheet that can be prioritized, you can find every time Board of Selectmen, or, you know, whoever is mentioned in the plan. And so you could say, okay, listen, I don't think there's much from the Board of Assessment Appeals, but if there was, then you could highlight what that is, or, you know, what do other groups need to be doing, or who do we need to coordinate with?